Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Gig Harbor City Council meeting of Monday, June 12th, 2023. The time is 5:30 PM. I will do a roll call from my far left. Councilmember Wook, here. Councilmember Storset is excused this evening. Councilmember Rodenberg, here. Councilmember Lycans, here. Councilmember Henderson, here. Councilmember Martin, here. And Councilmember Barber, here. Great, thank you. And if you would all please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Before we begin this council meeting, we would like to recognize that we are gathered on not only the ancestral and traditional lands of the Skobopch Band of the P'alup Tribe of Indians, but also on the site of one of the largest and longest standing historic villages of their people, the original inhabitants of the Gig Harbor area. Under changes to the agenda tonight, business item number two, Resolution 1281, has been moved to the next meeting on the 26th. So, council, if you did not see that memo, you can remove that item for now from your packet. And then, council, are there any other changes to the agenda this evening? Councilmember Wook?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to move item number four, Masonic Lodge, from the consent agenda.
Okay. Any other changes to the agenda tonight? Okay, seeing none.
Mayor?
Yes.
Also wanted to remind you that we were proposing to move council comments up in the agenda after city administrators report.
Yes, I think it is noted. They are. It's moved.
Great. Our city clerk is amazing. Thank you.
Yes, he is. Okay, so we moved public comment above consent agenda, and so that's another new change for all of you that are here to comment on items that are either on the consent agenda or not a business item on the agenda. Now would be the time to come forward. I will open public comment on any non-agenda items. So if you're here and wish to speak, you can just start making your way forward. And then when you get to the podium, if you could please state your name and home addresses for the record, and then you'll have three minutes to speak. So if there's two of you, you'll have a total of three minutes.
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
My name is Jackie Jones Hook. I'm the Executive Director for the Buffalo Soldiers Museum. I'm a Gig Harbor resident, 10504 East 123rd Street. And also joining today is Carissa Burgess, event planner for the Buffalo Soldiers Museum. So first want to say thank you for this opportunity to speak briefly with you. The Buffalo Soldiers Museum is about support of our military. We're an American History Museum, and our mission is to educate, preserve, and present American history. We are a 501(c)(3). In addition, we're community partners with JBLM. And as you know, JBLM within Pierce County, which includes Gig Harbor, is the largest employer and brings in the most revenue. With that being said, we are pleased to say that we will be hosting a Labor Day Festival to honor our military who was always there. The event will be held on Labor Day, which is September the 4th, on a Monday, and is also a family day, bringing families together. We know that families are very, very important. Would also be a softball game, and we're pleased to say that the players for the softball game will be our active duty military and will be Army versus Air Force under the historic name 25th Infantry Records versus the Redtail Hawks. Again, the event will be free and open to the public. So we passed out a handout, and we invite you to join the list of sponsors to help cover the cost for the day, and Carissa will tell you about the activities.
Hi, thank you. Following with what Jackie shared, the festival will be open to the public with free admission from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM at Heidelberg Park in Tacoma, which is directly behind Cheney Stadium. It will include live entertainment, live music performances, games, and activities, including a mobile video game truck. There will also be local food vendors, businesses, and nonprofit booths. It's especially important to us to support the families of the military as well as the surrounding communities in a more personal way. We have come up with some pretty incredible ideas for the festival, and with your support and different sponsorships, we can provide more. Our goal is to be able to provide free back-to-school supplies and haircuts, as well as the entertainment that we've mentioned. And then during the festival, from 1:00 to 3:00 PM, the softball game will be held at Cheney Stadium. This event is an opportunity to embrace and build both the military and their families, as well as the surrounding communities, creating connections for individuals, families, and local businesses. Our vision board for this festival has gotten pretty big, but our mission is very impactful, and with your help, we can turn it into a reality. This opportunity strengthens relationships and supports so many individuals and families within these communities.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak on an item on the consent agenda or not a business item? And if you could please state your name, full name, and home address for the record, please?
Madeline Hunter, 6409 Rosedale Street, Gig Harbor, Washington. Hi. Well, hello. My name is Madeline Hunter. I'm the owner of French Toast Theater, and I stand before you today on behalf of the incredible individuals who sit behind me, who have come together to create Pride in the Park. Pride holds immense significance for countless people. But before going into all of that, have you ever heard of a banana slug? Yes, most of us have heard of banana slug. That's great. As described in Wikipedia, is often a bright yellow, hence the banana nickname. A banana slug can also appear greenish, brown, tan, or white. And these remarkable creatures love mushrooms and play a critical role in our ecosystem. Being a slug is no easy feat. You can't run fast. You have small teeth, essentially zero effective means of self-defense. However, a banana slug is different. It possesses the unique ability to numb the tongue of any predator, making it a far less enticing meal. So picture this. You are one of 16 10-year-olds on a camping trip by an adult who was overly confident in their babysitting skills. You and your fellow campers traverse a trail when all of a sudden you stumble upon a banana slug. Instantly, the group divides into two factions, those willing to lick the slug and those who will opt down. I found myself among the group of rebels watching each of my peers join the Banana Slug Club, one after the other, until I was the sole holdout. My decision to not participate came from not wanting to lick a slug, and I didn't want to hurt it. It was impressive, the amount of bullying and teasing that came from me not wanting to lick a slug. Now I'm 26, teaching during COVID, and I'm wearing an adorable disposable mask. Suddenly, a parent approaches me and rips the mask off my face and demands to know what I'm trying to teach their children. Confused, I say, "Pleas." That parent holds up this mask like it is evidence to a crime scene and exclaims, "But why are you wearing a rainbow?" Flash floored, and I'm 27. A student musters up the courage to speak privately to me and confesses that they have a crush on a girl. Unfortunately, when this student went to another adult, they were met with a disheartening response. "God won't love you." Just imagine being 10 years old and going to a trusted adult and hearing,[581.76][582.24]"God won't love you for being you." I turned 28. A student approaches me, and they reveal they don't feel comfortable in their own body, but are too afraid to discuss their feelings with anyone else. Why are they fearful of opening up their emotions, ambitions, and aspirations? Why are children in our small town afraid to express their true selves? The answer lies in a deep-seated bias that our community has allowed to fester just beneath the surface, whether it's derogatory slurs made by our high school students or a lack of support for marginalized communities. We cannot ignore the impact of these prejudices, and that's why we're here today, to support and uplift our community.
I'm so sorry. So you're far over the three minutes, but I didn't want to cut off your story. Are you able to wrap up shortly?
Yes, she's speaking on behalf of a group, so she has five minutes, does she not?
Oh, yes, she does.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I did not realize you were officially speaking on behalf of a group. So can you set a timer for two minutes, Josh?
There were no more banana slug talk.
What's that?
I said, "No more banana slug talk."
No, I really was engaged in your story. Didn't want to cut you off, but I want to be fair to the others.
Oh, thank you.
So yes, the two more minutes is yours.
All right. So this next topic is Pride in the Park. It's not just a mere event. It is a celebration of the beautifully diverse tapestry of humanity. It is a celebration of individuality and self-expression. And boy, do we have a lineup for you. We have incredible entertainment from a DJ to a dazzling drag queen who is reprising "Let It Go", as we have gathered the best in the LGBTQ+ community to showcase their talents. And let's not forget the Kids Corner, where children can enjoy games, bubble parties, a puppet show, and more. But Pride in the Park goes beyond entertainment. We have an advocacy booth where both children and adults can access resources tailored to their specific needs. Additionally, we have gathered an array of an exceptional food creative vendors for you to pursue at your leisure, adding to the vibrant atmosphere of celebration. This Pride event marks a significant turning point, not only for the marginalized individuals in Gig Harbor, but for everyone present here today. June 24th will forever be remembered as the day when Gig Harbor embraced a brighter, happier, and healthier future. It will be a Gig Harbor that embraces individuality and celebrates uniqueness in all its forms. So my friends, I urge you today not to join the Banana Slug Club, but rather to join us at Pride in the Park and be a part of something truly beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak on an item not on the agenda? And if you could say your name and home address for the record, please?
Okay, so Marion Batson, Gig Harbor, Gig Harbor Chamber of Commerce, and home address is 1402250 First Avenue Northwest. I just want to thank the city and staff for all of their assistance with the Maritime Gig Festival, this just that happened recently. It feels like last weekend, but it wasn't. And thank you for everyone who attended. It was a great event, and I just cannot speak highly enough of your Public Works and Police Department for all their support. So thank you. That was all I had.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak on an item not on the agenda? Do we have anyone in our online audience this evening, Josh? So anyone watching online, if you would like to speak on an item not on the agenda, you can push the raise hand button at the bottom of your Zoom screen or star nine on your phone. Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment on consent and non-agenda items. Regarding item number four that was pulled from the consent agenda, I will turn that over to Councilmember Wook to explain why you pulled that off this evening.
Thank you. I am supportive of this lease, and I realize that when reading this, that the preschool will be signing a document saying that they understand there's some hazardous materials in the building. My concern is that I'm not sure this information will get to parents. And so in addition to the preschool signing, the document saying they're aware of hazardous materials in the school, I think I'd like to see every parent who signs their child up also be aware of the hazardous materials that are in the school. If it's good enough for the preschool to sign, I think parents should also be aware of that. And so that's my only concern about that. And I think they also should be aware that we have not had a seismic study done on this. So I hear, yes, questions?
Are you implying that they should sign this? Because this is not in agreement with the parents. Being aware of it, sure, I mean, I assume they can pass it along. It's in the public record.
I think this should be some way we know that's been passed along to the parents. I was going to suggest that the parents also sign this, but maybe there should be something that the preschool says that they've notified the parents of these hazardous materials. However, legally, we can do that. I just, you know, sometimes material information doesn't get passed along, and I'd like to see it passed along to the parents.
I mean, the city is not, doesn't have any relationship with those parents. Those parents have a relationship with the preschool, and so that would be for the preschool. And again, it's part of the public record, certainly can be passed along, and there's no issue there, but there's nothing for them to sign. They're not part of this agreement.
So there's no way that we, as a lesor, can require the lessee notify the parents that these are young brains that are growing, and there's no way that we can require the lessee to pass this information along to their parents?
This is an agreement between the preschool and the city lease, and so those are the two parties that have a contractual relationship. And so we've notified them, and we've required them to take certain actions in terms of cleaning the space and whatnot, as outlined in the agenda bill and the attachment. And so that's the scope of what we can do with this agreement, because those are the two parties.
Okay, thank you. I will not be supporting this then.
Okay. Is there?
I believe we need a motion on the consent agenda first before...
That's what I was just going to ask, if there was a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second? I think you got to it first. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Seeing no lights, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, motion passes 6-0. Thank you, council.
I should have said consent agenda as amended. My apologies. Do you all approve the consent agenda as amended?
No. Well, yes.
With the item removed.
Do we have to vote on item four separately?
Item four has been removed, so it's no longer part of the consent agenda. The next action will be to take action on item four.
Separate motion on the Masonic Lodge. Okay.
Thank you for the reminder. Okay, is there a motion to approve? Let's see. I'm going to read the motion. The suggested motion, move to authorize the mayor to execute an amendment to the existing lease agreement with the Gig Harbor Cooperative Preschool for use of the Masonic Watch. Is there a motion?
I make that motion.
Is there a second?
I seconded.
Oh, there you go. I was going to say, I don't think your mic's working. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Any of... Okay. Or yes, two? Any abstain? Okay, motion passes 4-2. All right. Our presentation this evening is a proclamation for Community Development Week. We have been having fun celebrating our community development team this week so far. It's only Monday, and we've already begun the celebration, so it's exciting. We are so happy to have so many of you here with us. So I will read this, and then if all of our staff that are in that team can come forward, I'd love it if we can get a picture with you all. I know you love pictures, but... All right, I'm going to read this from up here. Whereas, community development professionals focus on projects and programs in areas such as affordable housing, economic development, land use, transportation, and the environment. And whereas, the city of Gig Harbor's communities and neighborhoods are the foundation for providing a high quality of life for our residents. And whereas, these services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of community development professionals who are committed to the economic, social, and cultural growth of our communities. And whereas, the year 2023 marks the 47th Annual National Community Development Week. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Tracy Markley, Mayor of the City of Gig Harbor, do hereby proclaim the week of June 11th through the 17th, 2023, as Community Development Week. In the city of Gig Harbor, and I encourage all residents to join me in recognizing our community development professionals and the programs and projects that play a vital role in our city. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Gig Harbor to be affixed this 12th day of June 2023. Congratulations. I know, right? All right. Moving on to the mayor's report. So in recognition of increasing temperatures in our state, the Washington State Legislature passed a law this last session prohibiting utility providers from shutting off service for electricity or water during heat advisories. So the city will fully comply with this new law in relation to our water service, as this will help our residents experiencing financial hardship not be unduly affected during extreme weather. This law takes effect on July 23rd of this year, and our wonderful Public Works staff are working to finalize internal operational procedures. So just wanted you all to be aware of that. And then I've really been enjoying filming the Gigabyte Podcast. It's starting to kind of take off and get more viewership and listenership, and I love it. The next episode, actually, Robin Bolster Grant, our principal planner, she was the one in yellow up here. She was my guest last week on the podcast that's going to air this Friday, talking about our comprehensive plan, and you'll really enjoy that, so take a listen. But I'm going to be doing a new segment at the beginning of the podcast where I just talk to you all about things that are happening in the city, things that I want you to know. But I really want to know what you want to hear about. So I kind of put out a little plug on that for this podcast on Friday. But you know, what are the subjects that are important to you? What do you want me to talk to you about? What updates would you like on a biweekly basis on what's going on in the city? So if you would, and also, which, you know, we have a local business spotlight at the end of each podcast where we highlight a local business for five minutes. We interview them, hear more about their story, find out how to best support them. So if you have a local business in mind that you would like to see highlighted, or if you have suggestions for me, please email communications@gigharborwa.gov or email me directly. I really want to know what you want this podcast to be and what you'd like to hear about. So that concludes my report, and I will turn it over to our city administrator, Katrina Knutson, for her report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. I have four items for you this evening. First, I wanted to let everyone know that our city hall and city services will be closed on the 19th of June, on Monday. So if you need service from the city, besides police and wastewater, of course, please feel free to call us before or after, and that is in commemoration of the Juneteenth holiday. And just briefly, Juneteenth is the oldest known celebration commemorating the end of slavery in the United States. Since its origin in 1865 in Galveston, Texas, the observation of Juneteenth as an African-American emancipation day has spread across the United States and beyond. Juneteenth is a day to recognize the contributions that African-Americans have made to our state and our country. It is a chance to reflect on the progress that must continue to ensure that all have equal access and opportunity to participate fully in our society, and is marked by celebrations, and is a time for reflection, rejoicing, assessment, self-improvement, and planning for the future. So this was part of the resolution that council passed in 2021, Resolution 1247, and is one of the, well, it's the reason that the city gets the day off, but also it commemorates this very important day. And so I just want to want to say on behalf of the city to all of our residents and our staff that are African-American that we take this day in celebration and in time to rejoice, self-improve, and assess for full equality. Secondly, as you've already heard this evening, June is Pride Month, and council passed Resolution 1246 declaring June Pride Month within the city of Gig Harbor. And so with that, the city council has committed to make Gig Harbor an inclusive and welcoming community for all. Whereas, all members of the Gig Harbor community, including those who are lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and others, have the right to feel welcome by feeling safe, not be discriminated against, and to live without threat of violence or harassment. Whereas, supporting Gig Harbor's LGBTQ+ community also aligns with the council's strategic plan goals to foster a safe and livable community for all. And whereas, Gig Harbor is strengthened by and thrives upon the rich diversity of ethnic, cultural, racial, gender, and sexual identities of its residents, all of which contribute to the vibrant character of our community. And with that, I'd like to just wish everybody a happy Pride Month. And I know that there are several council members that wish to speak to this today as well. Let's see, third on the list, on the consent agenda tonight, council passed a resolution adopting our updated strategic plan. So for those of you who would like some light reading, it's in a handy dandy spreadsheet here. And what's important on this is that we're continually looking for improvement, as well as working together to get the city's business completed. Of important note is that a sixth goal has been added or priority for the city in the two-year strategic plan, which is to provide a safe, healthy, inclusive community. And that goes along with the other priorities of fostering a healthy city organization, ensuring a sustainable future for public services and facilities, maintaining small-town character and historic preservation while growing responsibly, promote environmental sustainability and preserve Gig Harbor's natural beauty, and promote and enhance a dynamic and robust economy. On this, and again, handy dandy one-pager, it's really great. Josh, our city clerk, put this together, outlines our goals, actions, and then project actions that were funded through the budget. So if you're interested on how the city of Gig Harbor is moving in any of these goals, feel free to look at this sheet, and you can see the actions that we're taking and how we're being good stewards of the public funds to advance the city's priorities. And lastly, not to get into a controversial topic, but fireworks, this is a reminder to everyone that fireworks are no longer allowed within city limits on any day at any time. And so this will be the first year after the enactment of the ordinance that this is going to be in effect. So wanted to remind everyone that fireworks are not allowed. Also, this is the first year that Pierce County's new ordinance is taking effect, which only allows for fireworks on 4th of July in unincorporated areas. So if you live near unincorporated Gig Harbor, on 4th of July, you may hear fireworks, and that is okay, as long as it's within unincorporated areas. So wanted to remind the community quite some changes about fireworks, and we'll be getting out more information, mayor and council. To provide some education before July fourth. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I know there will be some messaging coming from the police department as well. Just letting people know, I think maybe it's already on Facebook. So thank you, Chief, for making sure that was out there, but just be patient, please, everybody, for this first year as this new law takes effect. And sometimes people don't know who is in the county and who isn't. And so our officers, I know, will do an amazing job of responding to as many calls as they as they can. But I just ask for your patience as we enact this new ordinance. So just tagging on to that.
That's great. And if I may plug on our website, our GIS analyst coordinator. Put together a handy dandy map. If you are on our front page, you can find out if you live in the city of Gig Harbor very easily. It says, do I live in the city? And you put in your address and it'll tell you. So you can put in any address and find out if it's city limits or not.
Yes, thank you so much, everybody. And thank you, Katrina, for that report. And so as promised, we have moved council reports and comments up to the beginning of the meeting. And so I will call on, I think, Councilmember Barber was first.
Thank you, Mayor. I just simply want to say how proud I am of the people who've been working on the Pride event this year. When Councilmember Lichten and I did our little event in twenty twenty-two. We really hoped that somebody in the community would take on this event. And I am speaking for Councilmember Lichten now, but I don't think that we, I know, okay, like usual, no. I don't think it ever dawned on us that the amazing event that is going to take place on the twenty-fourth was what. We would end up with in one short year. And I'm just so impressed with this group of individuals and the work that they have done. And I want to urge everyone to come to Scancy Park on the twenty-fourth to celebrate love in this community. So I hope to see you there.
Thank you, Councilmember Wook.
Thank you. I have, I have three things for for council comments tonight. The first one, of course, is about pride. Pride Month. Pride Month is a time to celebrate the tremendous progress we've made. Pride in the park on June twenty-fourth is going to be a great celebration. And for all those folks who've been working on it, thank you so much. Pride events are about human rights. Empowering LGBTQ plus individuals to reclaim their rights and freedoms they are denied. And the public space they often feel excluded from. Visibility is crucial to fighting shame and social stigma, marching in the face of threats and violence. Everyone in Gig Harbor should feel comfortable and safe being themselves wherever they are. To our LGBTQ plus neighbors, you are welcome in Gig Harbor. We see you and you are not alone. Making people feel welcome and wanted is not just our duty, but it's also a very big part of our human joy. In two thousand eighteen, Mayor Kuhn, through a proclamation, declared Gig Harbor to be a welcoming city. So tonight I will make a motion. I move that beginning June one, twenty twenty-four, and throughout the entire month of June thereafter. And every following year, the pride flag be displayed on our city dais. Thank you. Do you have a motion? So I should wait?
Yeah. Should wait till the end or do or vote now? But. It's just a comment.
So motions can be made during this time, but they should be motions to direct staff for future action. It sounds like the motion is intended to be a resolution for consideration. If that's the intent, we can bring that resolution forward at a future meeting. But it should be something that's memorialized as more than just a motion at a meeting, I believe.
Sure. So then I would like to have it brought back forward as a as a resolution at the next council meeting. Can I do that?
That will be a motion that we can make.
So that that's a motion that I'm making. All right, then I would make a motion. That at the next council meeting, we bring back a resolution that. Starting June first in twenty twenty-four and throughout the entire month of every June thereafter, the pride flag be displayed on our city dais. And I hope to get a second.
Is there a second?
I second.
I may, can I make an amendment suggestion? I don't know if this is necessary. I just was, I was thinking that. I would rather see us do a flag policy. For every flag, not only the pride flag, which I wholeheartedly support. But also all of our flags and which flags fly. And I believe I have provided some examples to our city administrator. And that we look at all of our flags instead of just focusing on pride.
So the, so the amended. The amended motion is to. Address a flag policy ahead of adopting a resolution? Is that the amendment?
I believe the amended motion is to direct staff to prepare a resolution that not only has the pride flag in June, but a policy for all flag displays. I second the amendment.
And will that come back this in next meeting in June?
Could I clarify? I thought that Councilmember Lichten's amendment was not in regard to. Or was not stating to bring back a resolution, but instead was directing staff to. Work on and bring back a flag policy for council consideration.
That's what, that's what I was thinking it was, but is that, is that what you're saying? So. So not so, not.
Inclusive of the pride flag.
Right, all the flags considered in a flag policy.
Okay. So the amended motion is to direct staff to bring a resolution with a flag policy for all flags.
Right. And I just wanted to add a comment. This is a conversation I had with our city administrator Knutson. Talking about how we address pride flag and looking at all the flags. And looking at MRSC for Washington State, which shows best practices. And it appeared that looking at an overall flag policy was the most preferred method, and I provided several examples.
Yes, Councilmember Lichten did provide me those examples. Looking at MRSC, it was recommended that the city have a flag policy prior to determining determining one group over another group so that the council can consider that as a whole.
Okay, so. The amendment made by Councilmember Lichten is what we will, we will vote on now.
So can I ask a question about that? Are we in deliberation?
We can, yeah, council can ask clarifying questions.
So I'd like to know when that policy would be coming back. I, my, my resolution would have been coming back. The next meeting, next council meeting, will that flag policy be coming back the next flag, the next council meeting?
The flag policy would be a more encompassing work item as we've talked about, looking at what staff is. All of staff's work. So we cannot promise it would be back at the next meeting. Councilmember Lichten and I were talking about this in our one-on-one. And she sent me several resources, which then I reached out to many of my colleagues in Pierce County jurisdictions. And so I was not aware that you were going to be bringing this up this evening, or I could have prepared better with the timeframe. I would be able to get to council and the work session this Thursday with a timeframe for a flag policy.
Any other clarifying questions on the amendment?
I just wanted to make a quick, quick comment. I appreciate Councilmember Wook's bringing this up today. I just, in our conversation, I think doing an overall flag policy. Would be potentially more sound and long lasting. So thank you. Okay.
Okay. Councilmember Rothenberg, I believe you said you seconded Councilmember Lichten's amendment. You did, okay. Okay, so Councilmember Lichten's seconded by Councilmember Rothenberg. And I'm going to do a roll call vote on this. So roll call vote for the amendment for the flag policy resolution to be forthcoming at a future date. Councilmember Wook?
Aye.
Councilmember Rothenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lichten?
Aye.
Councilmember Henderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Martin?
Aye.
Councilmember Barber?
Aye.
Okay. The ayes have it. And then any clarifying questions on the original motion? For a resolution regarding the pride flag being displayed on the dais?
So we are now voting on the amended motion, which is essentially the same motion that Councilmember Lichten took, but because. There's an original motion, we should vote again on the original motion.
That's, yes. Okay, so voting on the original motion, I'm also going to do a roll call on the original motion. Councilmember Wook?
The original motion as amended.
As amended. Thank you. So if you could read back what the original motion now is as amended, I think there's some confusion up here.
So the original motion now as amended is the same as what Councilmember Lichten stated, which is. Just to paraphrase that council is directing staff to read, to prepare a resolution. With a flag policy that encompasses displaying of all flags to for council's consideration in the future.
Okay. So that is what we are voting on. Everyone understand? Okay. Council, Councilmember Wook?
Aye.
Councilmember Rothenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lichten?
Aye.
Councilmember Henderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Martin?
Aye.
And Councilmember Barber?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes six zero. Thank you, Council.
And I have two more comments. Okay. So last Friday, I attended the Pierce County Climate Conversation. Creating Regional Resilience Through Collaboration Meeting. What a name. Attending this were members out of the Pierce County Council, electeds from cities in Pierce County. Planning staff from Pierce County cities and towns and other groups such as. Puget Sound Clean Air, Pierce County Sustainable Resource and Department of Commerce. The topic was Vision Twenty Fifty and Climate. The Pierce County Sustainable Resource Division stated the goal to reduce Gig Harbor, to reduce greenhouse glass emissions. Of forty-five percent below the two hundred, two thousand fifteen levels by two thirty. These emissions had been coming down, but with the reduction of trees and increase of buildings and transportation. Those greenhouse gas emissions are now on the rise again. Puget Sound Clean Air also announced that more grants will be released in July. Some can be used for matching funds for any climate issues, grants for transportation. Climate action plans, building decarbonation, and even grant riders, those funds can be used for. Department of Commerce announced a new climate guidance policy resilience sub-element. Available in July and jurisdictions that have to. Put their comprehensive plans in place by twenty twenty-four will have to, will have twenty twenty-nine to update the resilience plan sub-element plan. Which is coming out the end of July. The real burning question from everyone in the room was funding for all these mandates coming down from the state. Bellingham did have a funding guide, which is expected to be sent to all participants. That attending this meeting and a recording and slide presentation will be forwarded to. All participants and I will forward that to city staff as well. So it was a big meeting and there was a lot covered in ninety minutes. And a lot of people were there and gave lots of good plans for how they got their climate action started. It was, it was very helpful and I think they do want to have another meeting coming up. So that will be interesting to see what the topic is. I think one of the topics that was brought up was, especially since the Department of Commerce was there. Was how to integrate the housing plan with the climate action plans. So everybody wanted to know how that works. And so one other last comment, and that is that Jenny Listens will be tomorrow morning, nine AM at Campbell Coffee. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Martin?
Thank you. So I wanted to just say kudos again to the planning staff. I think that our planning group has done an exceptional job with the twenty forty-four. Twenty forty-four, excuse me, comprehensive plan. And trying to make sense of a very complicated topic. There are many conflicting things. Councilmember Wook just mentioned a few things where. We want to make sure we have all these trees, but yet we know we have this growth coming into the state of Washington. Since I've lived here, born and raised here. The state has increased by five million people now. I'm a little old, so that might be why that happened, but it's a lot of people that have come here. So it is a very complicated issue. There are many people with a lot of passion around this issue. I want to commend our staff on every time we have a constituent, whether they're a resident within the city or outside of the city. And they're making comments whether totally informed or just very passionate about something that has been brought up. Our staff and our mayor as well take an incredible amount of time to make sure to reach out to each and every individual. That is commendable. In a city with almost fourteen thousand people, a lot is on everybody's plates. We don't have enough staff. We know that. And yet they take the time to do it right. So thank you to everyone at the city staff. You should be commended. I don't know. I ran a second in command of an organization that had nine thousand employees. And at one time, eighteen thousand people under our care and custody. We never got it right like this. So you're, you're the gold standard and you should really feel. Proud about what you've done to make sure that we communicate and we keep the city as great as it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Lichten?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to echo many of the comments. I was actually going to. Comment on the communication that went out over the weekend that talked about the impacts of the housing bills. It was so professionally written, informative. So kudos to the community development and it's your special week. So you get to have special parties every day or something. So. And then I just wanted to echo the comments on the Pride Month. I attended one of their planning meetings last week. This is a phenomenal group of people of, that have come together to just bring some joy into the city and. It's amazing to watch on the outskirts and just see all the energy that's going towards it. So I will hope that everyone will join me in attending. So. And then I also wanted to say to, and Miriam is still in the audience. That the Maritime Festival, I went on both days. It was so well done. It was such a neat event, watching the community all come together. It was the best seat I've ever had to see a parade in my life up there. And it was, it was really just joyful and the weather was beautiful. And I just want to thank the chamber for all their hard work. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rothenberg?
Yeah, I just wanted to report that the last Thursday, I attended the Downtown Waterfront Alliance's Farmer's Market. And they have a welcoming tent and in that tent, there's a spot for council people. And we've all had the opportunity to sign up. I think there's still a few spots left for council people to sign up. But it's a terrific way to talk to the citizens, have them drop by, tell you what's on their mind. To really engage the residents. So I'm glad to do that. I'm doing that again, probably a couple of times a month till all summer. So I encourage other council people to sign up to do that. And I encourage citizens to come on down to the market and. Talk to a council person, tell us what's on your mind. And I also wanted to congratulate Miriam on a wonderfully produced gig fest. It was fantastic. It. So well planned and it could not have happened without your leadership. I know that in the staging for the parade, it looked like chaos, but it was, but it was. But it was organized chaos. I mean, everybody was wondering, but you had a bunch of volunteers. It just worked so well. And it was like herding cats. But you know, I think there was probably half the participants were probably under the age of fourteen. So they had a lot of things in their mind and none of them was lining up straight. So good job.
Yes, thank, thank you to the chamber for such a fantastic event. And it's always so fun. To be out on the boat with Father Mark because he's, or I think that's what they call him, Father Mark, the priest from Saint, he's hilarious. Father Mark, okay. I just call it, he told me I can call him Mark. So. Anyway, he's just funny and he had his golden super soakers filled with holy water and we were really blessing a lot of people out in the harbor. It was amazing. It was amazing. Great. Thank you so much, Council, for all of those great comments. Thank you for your caring hearts and your attitude toward our community. It's just really. It's really amazing to see us caring about each other so deeply. So I appreciate that so much. It's just really, it's really amazing to see us caring about each other so deeply. So I appreciate that so much. So we will move on to our business items. The first item is our public hearing on the first reading of ordinance fifteen thirteen related to creation of Historic Preservation Commission. And so this is a first reading. It can be adopted on first reading. Josh can explain more if you need some details on that. But right now it's just first reading and our report comes to us from our Community Development Director, Carl DeCenis.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and good evening, council. Thank you for all the kind words and thank you for the proclamation on behalf of my staff. Really appreciate that. So tonight we're bringing to you ordinance fifteen thirteen, which does seek to create the city's first Historic Preservation Commission. As you are aware, the city is a certified local government. And that means that we have established a historic preservation program consistent with the state and federal laws that are associated with creating those. As part of that certified local government, one of our responsibilities is to have a local review board. So when we created or when we became a CLG or Certified Local Government, we decided to utilize the Design Review Board as that local review body. And that was years ago and likely the reasoning behind that was because we weren't likely able to get enough folks on a Historic Preservation Commission. So they chose to combine it with the Design Review Board, which is something else we needed. So it made sense at the time. There's a, there's a very distinct difference though between what a Design Review Board does and what the Historic Preservation Commission is meant to do. Our Design Review Board reviews permit applications and design alternatives. So current planning applications, they only meet when they have those applications. They don't have regular meetings. They write, they're a recommending body, so they recommend approval or conditions or denials of those applications or those alternatives back to the director. In contrast, a local review board is meant to be both a recommending body and a decision-making body. So they recommend approval of properties to be listed on our local register. And they make decisions on certificate of appropriateness and special tax evaluation requests. The other, the third function of a Historic Preservation Commission is to act as an advisory body to your council. When, where we have matters of historic preservation within the community, when, when those, when those come up. Right now, we have nine properties listed on our local register. All of those properties are city-owned with the exception of the fishing, fishing vessel Shenandoah that's at the History Museum. So we don't get a lot of certificates of appropriateness. That's the reason that I bring that up. Those certificates of appropriateness applications would only really come up when we're making changes to those properties that are listed on our register. And so it doesn't happen all that often. So the CLG membership that exists on the Design Review Board is not utilized often at all. And that makes it a little bit awkward for the Design Review Board to have two members on their body that don't make up a quorum when they do meet and just don't really have to show up at many meetings. So they're really underutilized in that way. The Historic Preservation Commission, depending on how council prioritizes utilizing them, could act as, as sort of a, that advisory, act in that advisory role to take up matters of historic preservation and really get eyes on that program that we haven't had since, since we first became a certified local government. So this action would really bring the city into better alignment with state law and also consistent with how other certified local governments in the state operate. From, from what we know and in speaking with our, our friends at the Department of Archaeology and Historic Preservation who oversee the certified local government program, we found that there are really no other jurisdictions that have sort of this hybrid model for a local review board like we do. And, and I'd, I'd close with saying that this is something that's been discussed for a long time at the city. Since I've got, since I came to the city in twenty fifteen, we've been talking about this sort of awkwardness of having the CLG members on the Design Review Board. And so we've been discussing it for a long time. And in fact, the Design Review Board themselves have discussed this very matter at meetings. Because, because of that sort of, that's, that strangeness that exists there. We've been working with the Department of Archaeology and Historic Preservation, Michelle Thompson, very closely. She's reviewed this ordinance. She's helped us craft some of the language in it. And she's also very supportive. Oh, and Michelle has joined us too. So in one moment, I'm going to turn it over. I'm going to turn it over to Michelle just to say a few words and she'll be available for questions too. But the point I really want to make is that staff, the DRB, and we did take this to the DRB, this ordinance as it exists today to get their feedback and we, we received a lot of positive feedback on it. They're very supportive of the idea. And so, and as well, the state is supportive of it. So tonight, we're recommending that council consider the ordinance and determine, of course, whether or not to pass it this evening or whether or not to bring it back for second reading on, would be July twenty-sixth. And with that, I think I'll turn it over to Michelle if she, if you would like Michelle to say just a few words. Thank you for coming.
Hi, everybody. My name is Michelle Thompson. I am the Certified Local Government Coordinator or CLG Coordinator for the state of Washington. And as Carl said, I work for the Department of Archaeology and Historic Preservation. Carl put it very eloquently, everything that I kind of had plans to say tonight. So I appreciate that. You got it all right. That's exactly true. When Gig Harbor became a certified local government in two thousand and six, my understanding is that there wouldn't have been enough people at the time to fill the five minimum members that you need for a Historic Preservation Commission, but that has changed. And it was an unusual situation that you do have on the Design Review Board serving as your Historic Preservation Commission. The only thing that I can say, you know, and Carl did say, you know, we are in support of this. This is how the state procedures are meant to work, that you would have your own Historic Preservation Commission. Gig Harbor being one of our most historic and, you know, such a special place, really deserves to have that Historic Preservation Commission as a, as its, as its own body. You know, you could have such a more robust local program, meeting more regularly, education for historic preservation. I was just in Gig Harbor recently, stayed at the, the Inn at Gig Harbor for the Main Street, Washington Main Street program. We, we held our retreat there. I think it was last fall and it's such a special place. So very much in support and I'm here for questions.
And thank you, Mayor. With that, we'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Thank you both for your presentation and for being here. Councilmember Wook?
Yes, thank you. Ms. Thompson, thank you very much. We had an opportunity to chat today and I think you cleared up some of my questions. So nice to see you. Thank you. I look forward to supporting this.
Thanks, thank you.
Any other clarifying questions from council? Okay, seeing none, I will open up the public hearing on this agenda item. If you wish to speak, you can come forward at this time and you'll have three minutes. Okay, anyone in our online audience that wishes to speak on this item, you can press the raise hand button at the bottom of your Zoom screen or star nine on your phone. Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing. And just as a reminder, there will be no public comment period at the next meeting on June twenty-sixth, because this is a public hearing. I will open it up for council additional comments. Councilmember Barber?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm very supportive of having this new commission in the city. I believe that it's yet another recognition of what I'm calling our conscious growth over the last many years that have resulted in us being a large enough city to need this. And I also believe that it's important because it places an emphasis on one of our strategic plan goals. So I am, I would be in favor of asking the city clerk how we could vote on this tonight, especially since there was no public comment tonight. I think that I, I may, I'm speaking for myself, but I'm ready to vote on the resolution tonight if we can.
So the ordinance can be adopted tonight? It just requires a majority of council plus one? So if there are five affirmative votes, then it can be adopted this evening?
Okay. Would you like to make a motion, Councilmember Barber?
Sure. So I move for the adoption of ordinance fifteen thirteen to create a Historic Preservation Commission in the city of Gig Harbor.
I'll second.
Okay, motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Abstain.
Okay, one abstain. Motion passes five to one. Thank you, council. As I mentioned earlier, business item two has been moved to the second meeting in June, the twenty-sixth. So we will move on to business item three. Resolution twelve eighty-two, amending the wastewater comprehensive plan by revising the sewer collection basin boundary between sewer collection basins number two and number three. And this report comes to us from our Public Works Director, Jeff Langham. Hi, Jeff.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. The city has received, quite a while ago actually, a request from CES Northwest for a technical amendment to the city's two thousand eighteen wastewater comprehensive plan. It's related to their proposed Harbor Run Platte just off of Peacock Hill Avenue and they near one hundred and eighth street. The platte is just under five acres and it proposes to be constructing sixteen residential homes. Currently, the platte is located in sewer basin number two. I'm going to share my screen real quick and I'll take a look at the location. I'm going to make it a little bigger. It's really hard to see. It's a little better. Okay, so just to be able to orient everybody, Borgon Boulevard is here. Peacock Hill is here and this magenta color is the Harbor Run Platte. The brown shading is basin two, the green shading is basin three. These green lines are gravity, existing gravity sewer mains. So basin two currently does not have sewer collection in this area. It actually ends just the south end of the screen, just off the screen, near ninety-ninth street court. So in order for a platte in this area to receive sewer, they would have to construct over twenty-seven hundred feet of gravity sewer main. Or they would have to just discharge to onsite septic. When the wastewater comprehensive plan was put together in two thousand and eighteen, it used light R technology, which has topographic accuracy of about two feet or so. It didn't take into account what might happen is if you get survey grade data that shows that actually you can serve a basin in a different manner. That's what these technical amendments are about that we've been talking about a lot lately. And so in this case, the applicant found that they could just as easily serve this platte by gravity sewer into basin three as opposed to, which is already has existing infrastructure. And instead of constructing twenty-seven hundred feet of gravity sewer. In this area, these two basins are connected just at the south end on North Harborview Drive, basin two has a lift station. It discharges into basin three. So regardless of the path sewer gets to or through basin two, it will always end up in basin three. So this kind of just, the proposal here is, is making that a shorter distance and not putting the burden on the existing lift station number two. As part of the wastewater comprehensive plan technical amendment that was requested by the applicant, they prepared a report in July of two thousand and twenty-one and to outline their proposal and outline what they thought was the appropriate modeling techniques to make sure that what they're proposing would actually work. Our consultant reviewed that report and confirmed that that actually is correct. The, the report that was provided by the applicant shows that there's going to be no adverse impacts. There's going to be no constraints added to the system in order to make this change. So therefore with city staff has reviewed it and we support the proposed change as provided in their application. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Henderson?
Thank you. The Harbor Run Platte, that's outside city limits, right? So if I'm not mistaken, is that correct? City limits is the red line that goes up city boundary? Yeah, so that's, they're completely out of the city limits. So they're in our management area. Okay. Their rates then will be higher than the normal, if you were living in the city? Is that also correct? Okay. Alright, thanks.
Any other clarifying questions from council? Okay, I'm not seeing any. I will open up public comment on this agenda item only. So if you are in the audience and you would like to speak on this item, you can come forward at this time. Okay, anyone in our online audience that wishes to speak on this agenda item, you can press star nine on your phone or the raise hand button at the bottom of your Zoom screen. Okay, seeing none, we will close public comment on this agenda item and open it up for council deliberation. Councilmember Wook?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve resolution twelve eighty-two.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I see no other lights. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes six zero. Thank you, council. Okay, so moving on to our last item. Professional Service, thank you, Councilmember Langham, Director Langham. It's been a long week, y'all, and it just started. This, this is your report next to you. So Professional Service Contract Amendment Number Four, award for Public Works Operation Center Building and suggested motion move to approve and authorize the mayor to execute the Construction Support Services Contract Amendment Number Four with Lawhead Architects in the amount of twenty thousand dollars. So councilor, I'll do it again, Director Langham. I'm so sorry. Please excuse my, I'm going to call it moving brain.
Yes. I know who I am. That's okay. So many of you have probably visited our operations shop up off Scansy Avenue. It's a shop that's been there since the eighties. The upstairs conference room, used to be a conference room, now houses four of our staff, two utility billing technicians and two public works administrative assistants. They're in tight quarters there. We all are aware of what they have, what they, how they have to work right now. But we also aware that our new operation center is under construction. Speaking of which, they're getting ready to pour the footings tomorrow, I believe. So coming up out of the ground, yeah. But in the meantime, with those four staff members in tight quarters, having meetings and everything else and talking on the phone a lot, as you can imagine with utility billing. The operations staff on their own went ahead and with, with permitting, built a sound wall between the tech, utility billing staff and the administrative staff. They did that just this year. But they realized when we were finalizing and just had just awarded the contract for this, that the new building didn't have a wall that separated administrative staff from the rest of the larger staff gathering room. And so what we are looking at here with this contract amendment is to add a sound wall that would essentially put a wall with a window between the administrative staff and the operations staff main area and then with a door in there so that there can be some, they can close the door if they need some quiet to be on a call or something else. And so that's what this amendment does. It also will adjust some windows on the south side. Right now, the windows that are on the south side- Right now, the windows that are on the south side in this area of the building are above head height. And this amendment would lower those windows so that we could, so the staff can look outside. If you haven't been out there yet, there's a nice view of trees and looking to the south. And then also, thirdly, this amendment would add about ten thousand dollars in management reserves so that when we have minor, if we, if we have minor adjustments to the professional services contract, that can be made at a staff level. But we're only asking for ten thousand dollars. We're already moving along really well with, with the contract itself. So all said and done, we're asking for a total of twenty thousand dollars for this contract amendment. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Any clarifying questions from council? Okay, seeing none, I will open up public comment on this agenda item only. If you'd like to come forward at this time, you may. Okay, to our online audience, if you would like to make comment on this agenda item, you can push star nine on your phone or the raise hand button at the bottom of your Zoom screen. Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment and open it up for council deliberation. Councilmember Lichten.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I move to approve and authorize the mayor to execute the Construction Support Services Contract Amendment Number Four with Lawhead Architects in the amount of twenty thousand dollars.
Second.
Great. Councilmember Rothenberg, you have your light on as well?
Yes, I have a discussion about this. The twenty thousand dollars, isn't that kind of within the mayor's purview to spend twenty thousand dollars on something like this without it having come to council?
The total contract amount was well above.
But this is a twenty thousand ad, so that.
Yeah, so we, we typically go through the full process if the total contract amount was well above that amount.
Thank you. I just hated to see staff go to all the trouble to create this for twenty thousand dollars and spend a thousand dollars creating this. So it's too bad we couldn't do it the other way. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, motion passes six zero. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Carl. Thank you all to our, all to all of our staff for working so hard on this agenda bill. And announcement of upcoming meetings is attached to the end of this agenda. So you can see what's coming, subject to change, of course, but it lays it out pretty, pretty nicely what's coming up. And so if there is nothing else for the good of the order, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
I second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Good evening.